Whitefunkbach.
Yes, I'm here.
Doyle.
Here.
Estes.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Roberts. Nordstrom. Scott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, and now we'll go on to the invocation from John Britt of First United Methodist, and that'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord God, as we gather here this evening, we give you thanks for this place. We lift up our community this evening. We ask for peace and reconciliation for improved relationships among all races. And we lift up our greater world. We ask for peace. We give you thanks for the mayor, for the city council members, and for all of our public servants. We give you thanks for their time and dedication to serve our community, to make Rapid City a better place for us all to live. I ask for your blessings this evening upon their leadership, that you would guide their words, that they would be filled with honesty and care and integrity, that you would bless their discussions and the opinions and the feelings offered, that all would be open to hear others and willing to consider sides. I ask for your blessings upon all decisions tonight, as they would affect individuals and neighborhoods in our whole community. We just ask for your blessing. I ask for your peace to reign this evening, and for you to bless all that occurs here this evening. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I have a suggestion to move item number forty to after number forty-seven. Are there any motions on adopting the agenda? Okay, a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott to move item forty. Any others issues here? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, we're going to do awards and recognition, starting with Veteran of the Month Vernon Robertson.
In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the February 2016 Veteran of the Month recognition to Vernon Robertson. Mr. Robertson was born on July first, nineteen sixty-four, in Sisseton, South Dakota. He graduated high school from Oglala Community High School in nineteen eighty-two. After high school, he joined the U.S. Army in nineteen eighty-four. During his time in the Army, he was trained as an M-three Bradley Fighting Vehicle Cavalry Scout and was permanently assigned to Fort Hood, Texas, where he completed air assault school. Mr. Robertson reverted to reserve status from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen eighty-one, or, sorry, nineteen ninety-one. During this time, he was ordered to active duty in support of Operation Desert Shield, Desert Storm. He was honorably discharged in June of nineteen ninety-one. His greatest moment was being able to participate in the Desert Storm conflict utilizing the skills he was trained to do. During his military career, Mr. Robertson received the Army Commendation Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Southwest Asia Service Medal with Bronze Service Star, Army Service Medal, and the Kuwait Liberation Medal. He also received the Expert Marksman Badge for rifle, Expert Marksman Badge for grenade, and the Driver-Mechanic Badge. In nineteen eighty-three, Mr. Robertson married Deborah Perkins, and together they have five children. When he returned to South Dakota, he began working in the construction field in Rapid City. He recently became employed with the Retired and Listened Association in the culinary arts. Mr. Robertson is a life member of TRIA, as well as the appointed Sergeant-at-Arms for the Board of Directors of Black Hills TRIA, Chapter Twenty-nine. He's also a member of TRIA's Honor Guard. Mr. Robertson has been serving our country since nineteen eighty-four with dedication and sacrifice, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, Vernon Robertson.
Thanks, everybody, for your support of our troops especially. Seeing all the support from my own community, granted, I'm from Sisseton, but I moved here and lived here my whole life. It's a great community to live in, all great people. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Come forward. Turn the microphone over to you.
My turn to give the city a gift. I'm John Mattson, and this is Megan Olson. We're co-Vice Presidents of the Niko City/Rapid City/Sister City Organization, and we had thirteen delegates from either Rapid City or previous Rapid City residents went to Niko City last October, and we visited the city and got to see how things are over there. And while we were there, they gave us a gift to give to the city, and I would like to present that right now. First one is a clock that's carved in Niko City and has cherry blossoms, and it's a wood carving and made in Niko City. So, I would like to present that to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the association was also given a gift, and I'd like to have you display that also. And this year is the Year of the Monkey in China, and Japan follows that also. So, these are the three monkeys that are also carved on the side of the shrine in Niko called Toshogu Shrine, and we also went to the four-hundredth year anniversary of the shrine. And that's the three monkeys, so. That would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
This is good. This is a good. Okay. Never. See no evil, hear no evil, and speak no evil. I said it's a good thing for politi-- good rule for politicians follow.
Yes.
Well, thanks very much.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate that.
I do not believe we will be having an executive session tonight, so therefore, we'll go on to general public comment. There are no speaker request forms for general public comment, so we will move on to the non-public hearing items, items three through forty. Open and close public comment on those as well. Well, open public comment on three through fourteen, and there are no request forms on three through fourteen. So, there are a few that will come just a little bit later in the agenda, so. Onto consent items, three through fourteen. Are there any items on consent from three to fourteen that the council would like to remove? If not, okay. Move to approve by Estes and a second by Laurenti. All in favor of approving the consent items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, and now we are on to item number, well, we're on to non-consent items, items fifteen through forty. We'll open public comment on those items, and we have three speaker request forms. The first one from Bill Hubner on item number eighteen. If you could approach the podium, and you have a three-minute time limit.
Is it on? Thank you, Mayor, Council. I've talked with a lot of the, I'm Bill Hubner from H Steel and Recycling. I have spoken with a lot of the council members in the last week, and they have some concerns that I would like to address, so I respectfully ask them, ask the council, to defer a decision on this until the next council meeting. And really, that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, the next speaker request form is from William Cozer. Is that correct? On item thirty-four.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for taking the time to listen to me here. My name is William Cozer. I'm the owner of Brown's Repair. We just recently constructed and moved into a new building located at the corner of Deadwood Avenue and Lean Street. This is a property that we recently filed a variance request on not to have to install a sidewalk at this current time. The sidewalks were, of course, shown on the building plans due to the fact that the sidewalks on the plan, if they weren't on the plans, they probably wouldn't have been approved, and so our engineer did go ahead and put those on the plans. The various request was filed at some of a late time. This is due primarily to the misunderstanding and the timing of the process of the application. I was under the impression that we could actually bond out for the sidewalk, just as we do for the landscaping, and then file the request after we had moved in. I found out later that this was incorrect. So, however, we have filed the variance at this time, and we would like to request a waiver of right to protest on the sidewalk. Basically, there are currently no sidewalks on either Deadwood Avenue or Lean Street, along with Plant Street to the south of us, Commerce Road, Rand Road, or Samco to the east. In fact, there are no sidewalks within approximately a mile to a mile and a half of our current location. In recent history, there have been other businesses granted the same request that I'm asking for. An example of that would be Climate Control Storage, which is just to the north of our location on Deadwood Avenue. He had that request granted, I think it was just a few years ago. There have also been another other businesses that recently have been remodeled on Deadwood Avenue, such as Titan Machine, which is basically about a block away from our location, along with Adams IFC, who currently occupies the old Rapid Chevy building on Deadwood Avenue, none of which have a sidewalk in front of them. All I'm asking for is to be given the same consideration as others have been given, and that when it comes time in the city's long-range plans to have sidewalks put on Deadwood Avenue and the adjacent streets, I'd be more than willing to accommodate that request. I feel then to install and maintain a sidewalk at this time, that would lead to nowhere, financially a waste of money at this time, and could be best served to landscape our property on our corner, to make it more attractive for the public and to our customers that come see us. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now, we have Jordan Mason on item number forty.
Thank you, Mayor. I just actually wanted to commend the council for taking the time to look into the allegations that were brought forward concerning Jerry Wright and Ron Sasso, and I definitely look forward to reading the investigative report when it's publicly disclosed, and also look forward to hearing the council's final decision on this matter, and hopefully to, one way or the other, put it to rest on the allegations. Thank you.
Okay, this will close public comment, and we're on to ordinances. Item, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead, then. Just restate your name and...
My name is Bill Hubner, and I'm speaking on my behalf, you know. I have known Jerry Wright for, I would say, almost my entire adult life. He's known, my family's known him for fifty-plus years. I just want to say, I've always known Jerry to be an honest, straightforward individual, and I just want you to, I guess, keep that in consideration when you have your meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, we're on to item number fifteen under ordinances, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifteen is a second reading of ordinance number six-zero-nine-one, an ordinance repealing Chapter one-point-zero-eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to wards and precincts, and adopting a new revised Chapter one-point-zero-eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and make a motion to approve.
Second by, was that Steve Laurenti? Okay. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item.
Item number sixteen is the first reading of ordinance number six-zero-nine-two, an ordinance to update the snow removal procedure in the city of Rapid City by amending Chapter ten-point-four-eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Darla Drew. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item.
Item number seventeen is the first reading of ordinance number six-zero-nine-four, the supplemental appropriation number one for the year twenty-sixteen. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Jerry Wright, and we have one light, Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I was the lone vote at Legal and Finance on this particular issue, but I wanted to make sure that my colleagues were aware. I know Legal and Finance committee members are, but if they're not already aware, I'm sure that they are, that this is the sixty-seven thousand dollars for the utilities at Main Street Square. A little background on this is, going back to our budget hearings, an eighty-thousand-dollar request came forward from this same group for a green team or a clean team for the downtown. And I believe that the council made the right decision by, I believe it was unanimous, but I could be corrected on that. It was very close to it, it was surely denied, because this ends up being a tax, if you will, that, I shouldn't say a tax. It is sixty-seven thousand dollars now that the general fund taxes, which is the rest of the taxpayers, will be paying these utilities. At that Legal and Finance meeting, I spoke with the gentleman from Main Street Square and specifically asked him why the change, why this particular vision, was a vision fund project, which was a great project. It's done a lot for the downtown, but it's doing a lot for the downtown without the taxpayers, without it being a liability for the taxpayers. So, I asked him if there were issues with their finances, whether, was there anything that would make this happen, make this change? Why would this now have to become a taxpayer liability? And he said, no, their finances were solid. So, my question still is, why are the taxpayers being billed now for these utilities when the current agreement between Destination Rapid City and Main Street Square was working? And there weren't any reasons, I asked the questions, but there weren't any reasons. The only reason that you're about to hear, as I hear people chiming in, getting ready to speak, is that this is a park. Well, it's not a park. It never was a park. It was a vision fund project, and in fact, when it was pitched to the council then, it was promised, just like some of the other vision projects are, like the museum, the Journey Museum, that it would not be any cost to the taxpayers to get those vision funds. So, and here we are, paying for subsidizing the museum, to the tune of, I think, three-hundred-and-twenty-five to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars every year. And right now, the taxpayers, it's about to be approved, with my dissent, another sixty-seven thousand dollars will be borne on the taxpayers, with no reason, except for the fact that some people want to call this a park, like all the other places, the Green Way area, which is actually called a park. To my knowledge, it's not been changed to the downtown square or the, you know, park. Park hasn't been added to it. I don't believe that wherever you lay sod, then becomes a park. If that's true, I would like to submit to the council my utilities, because I have yard in the front and the back of my home. Let's call that a park, and I'd be willing to let people actually come to my home and use it, but I don't think individual citizens have the ability to rent any space at the downtown square, much like they do for parks. And so, I don't understand how anybody can make the case that the reason we should start paying these utilities, it's because it's like all of the other parks, but I'm going to let some of my colleagues speak to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it depends on your definition of park, but when, I guess, if we want to get to legalities, that's where we might have to talk about this. But when I drive by this area in the summertime and see it more used than any of the parks that are designated in this city by kids that are having a great time, splashing around in the fountains, people hanging out, having a great time, it's a very visual expenditure of taxpayers' money. This isn't something that we just, you know, did willy-nilly. I mean, it was planned to be what it is, and it's working better than we could have possibly imagined. Now, as I remember this discussion, we've had kind of a trade-out. They had come to us, the Main Street Square, for eighty thousand dollars for their green team to clean up the downtown, that would clean it up better than any group that we could pay for at that amount. So, they said, okay, we'll take, we'll keep the green team, we'll pay for that. You guys, you know, why don't you step up and pay for our utilities like we're a park, like we were promised? And so, actually, this deal saves us twenty-three thousand dollars in this regard. That's how I look at it. It's a good deal for us. We'll pay the utilities and electricity, and they'll keep the downtown clean. A park isn't much fun when it's dirty, and so, I trust them to take care of this operation, and I don't think that it's a waste of taxpayers' money, and I don't think it's any kind of a problem for us to come up with sixty-seven thousand dollars to make sure that the water that people use there every day in the summertime, all the time in the wintertime. I think it's time that we just say, this is a great deal, we're going to go ahead and support it. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Echo a little bit, is this on? It's not working.
A little closer.
We'll use this one instead. Thank you, Brad. I will be kind. Just to echo that a little bit, downtown's not much fun when it's dirty either. How many of you remember back in the day when it wasn't very fun to walk around downtown? I do. You know, the reality is that this green team is a private organization that is doing part of Parks and Rec, I mean, they're helping out the Parks and Rec Department by taking care of that, but this wasn't a request for that eighty thousand that was denied. They withdrew it, so just to set the record straight on that. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
I just want to remind everyone that taxpayers, the downtown businesses that work every day paying sales tax and property tax and all the taxes that they generate are taxpayers also, and this is a entity of our community that's helping them do a better job as a community center, but they are taxpayers, and they're paying their share, and I think that this is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll go back to Steve Laurenti with a minute and twelve seconds left.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate that there wasn't one reason given for making a change to the agreement. Not one reason was given, except now that you're going to see an overwhelming majority of the council put this onus, put this sixty-seven thousand dollars on the taxpayers, when the agreement between Main Street Square and Destination Rapid City was working, and no reason was given for the change, except that we're going to now have the taxpayers pay these utilities. That's all that has changed, and I will vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval of item number seventeen. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, motion passes with one no. Item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen is the first reading of ordinance number six-zero-eight-nine, an ordinance amending section seventeen-point-zero-six of Chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the with-then-described property is requested by Renner and Associates LLC for a rezoning from general agricultural district to heavy industrial district for property generally described as being located south of Elgin, 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 between North Street and North Elk Vale Road, and I make a motion to postpone for two weeks to the next council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Second was by Jerry Wright to postpone. Go to Ron Whitefunkbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Works. I spent some time looking this project over and trying to get my grip, my hands around why they wanted to deny it, and I'm just, I can't, like, get my arms around it. Then, I read three of the letters, or three letters from neighboring neighbors in here, and I think since then, from my understanding, one of these neighbors has recanted their opposition to this, and I think that it would be fair that that letter be removed, because I think people were aware of that fact. The other fact that, things that people need to understand here, and I think Mr. Hubner wants to, obviously, the motion's been made to extend it so he can give people more information. It did come up quickly. I was in Tennessee. I didn't get a chance to be here at the Public Works Meeting, which then caused a non-quorum, so they had to cancel the meeting. I don't know if there's any opposition here tonight, but nobody came here to speak against it. I spent some time out there looking this area over. It's kind of enclosed by the hills around it. It sits back, it sits right next to heavy industrial, which, those tanks, those big giant gas tanks, aren't ever going to go anywhere that I can imagine. They've been there for a long time. Mr. Hubner's business has operated in the city of Rapid City since as long as I can remember, and he'll be the first one to tell you it's an ugly business, there's no doubt about that, but I can guarantee you one thing, Rapid City would be very ugly, very ugly, without his business. It provides an opportunity for the people in the community to bring their scrap materials, and people notice downtown, the building that got demoed down there, a lot of that was recycled, and it went to Mr. Hubner's business to be recycled and resold and reused for another venture. His business is a good business, it's a viable business. I think what he's asking for here is well within reason. It's, I don't think there's really any other locations that would be better, that would be more concealed, and maybe, you know, eventually get some of the, what he feels is unsightliness. I drove by today, and I'm, you know, some people may look at that as art. I know there's people that use that stuff and make art out of it, but I just, I want to, if my colleagues have questions for Mr. Hubner, he'd be more than happy to accommodate you, to come down and see what he's doing, tour his plant, he can show you the area there and give you an idea of what his vision is for the future. And at one point, I think, people had talked about a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, and one of the reasons that some of the overhaul that we had in the city here had to do with PUDs, limiting the facts of what people can do with their own properties and their own zoning becomes a big problem. So, I would not encourage a PUD in his case. I think that, and also, the new rules for PUD is his plan, he could simply come forward with his own plan, saying, my Planned Unit Development is to operate within the boundaries of what industrial use can be used for. So, I think that's important for us to acknowledge, moving forward with this item when it comes forward, so. If you have any questions of me later, you can catch me after the meeting. I can answer them from what I, my knowledge of the place is. I've spent several hours on location in several different occasions, so I think that I don't really have any issues with this, unless there's something hiding out there that I don't quite understand. So, I just would encourage, as it comes forward, that if you need some more information, enlighten yourselves and get to know what a PUD really does to people. I remember sitting on this council, and some of these PUDs, the last thing on the PUD was whatever else we deemed pertinent. So, a person would go all the way through, meet all the criteria for what they were going to do, and then if a few council people decided that they wanted to change something, they would just, you need to get this and condition met too, and the guy's like throwing his hands up in the air going, what do you mean? He just add another condition at the end, so. The PUDs, I'm not real, I'm not real happy with it. I don't think it's a concern here. I think we can move forward at some point in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion is to postpone. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
To clarify, I think the motion was for two weeks, and I think the next council is March seventh, which is three weeks. I think that we just reflect that it will be at the March seventh meeting, if that's okay. March 7th meeting, if that's okay.
Okay, now on to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I concur that it's supposed to be at the next council meeting. And I'd also like to take this time, since Alderman Wyffenbach stressed getting more information, I would highly recommend that everyone stream the public, or the Planning Commission meeting. This was heard at that meeting, and the planning commissioners, for the most part, I'm the liaison for the Planning Commission, the planning commissioners, for the most part, thanked Bill for his plan. He laid out, or he has laid out, a wonderful plan in order to move his existing operation over time to this new land, and it would actually remove it off of Eglin Street. And it's, it's really a good plan. The concern of the Planning Commission, because they're directed to take a look at our future land use plan, is to make sure that when they approve a zoning, that everything is given consideration. The request is to rezone this to heavy industrial. And the Planning Commission members wanted to go ahead and make a motion to approve Bill's plan to rezone this to heavy industrial, with the condition that it also has a designation of a planned development. And the only reason they were looking at that concern is if, for whatever reason in the future, these lands were bought by some other company or anything else, once the city council or the Planning Commission makes that determination and rezones that property without a planned development designation, it opens it up that the city or the neighbors would never have any other recourse to know what's going in there if a straight zoning occurs. So the Planning Commission was willing to make the motion to approve to a heavy industrial with the designation of a planned development, but Bill asked the Planning Commissioners at that Planning Commission meeting to either vote up or down, because if they denied it, he's just gonna go back and reconsider the whole thing. And so the Planning Commissioners at that point, that's the only reason that they went ahead and denied it at that point, was Bill's request. So if you would please, before the next session of this comes up, go ahead and please stream the Planning Commission meeting as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Back to Ron Wyffenbach for 23 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to respond, because my name was brought up, but the fact is that that is correct. They want a PUD, but if you're, the PUD as it stands today is generated from the applicant's plan. So that has to be taken in. I mean, when you start to want to control each individual item when you're doing zoning, I mean, if there's something they in particular want, why don't they just come out and tell the guy, so he can just put that into his plan? That's my issue on that. I mean, I don't want to go back and forth forever. The PUDs have changed over time to the better. They give more flexibility when people are trying to run their businesses. So, thank you.
Now to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did stream it and raise some questions, and I did receive a call from the Hubners. And I'm glad we're extending this, because if I had to vote on it tonight, I would, I'd support the Planning Commission's denial. Just, you know, but once I went out there and looked at it, and Bill showed me around a little bit, and you look at the lay of the land, I have a higher comfort level on it. But, but, you know, I wish we had a tool that was between the PUD and the other option, and that is to just wholesale change the zoning on 40 acres, because it's, you know, there's, although we've, there's been this word that one of the neighbors recanted, and I'm not sure which neighbor we're talking about, but I know, you know, there's been some talk about tree lines and things like that. But, but, you know, if you just wholesale change the zoning, those agreements are out the window. I mean, nobody has to honor it. And somehow, there's a few i's that need to be dotted, in my mind, and a couple t's crossed. And I'm just, I'm not sure where we're gonna go here in the next three weeks, but hopefully we can all look at it and accommodate, accommodate these people. I think, I think it's the right thing. I personally have some concerns about, like I say, rezoning the whole 40 acres. But it's a good, it's a good move if we can, if we have the tools to make this work and help, help the Hubners. This will be a good deal for everybody. Thanks.
Okay, motion on the floor is to postpone until the next city council meeting on March 7th. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Let's go to the next item.
Item number 19 is the first reading of ordinance number 6093 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the with-then-described property is requested by Renner &amp; Associates LLC for Youth and Family Services Incorporated for a rezoning from neighborhood commercial district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located at 720 North Maple Avenue. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Jerry Wright. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. The next item is under Public Works, and we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this still isn't working. Okay, item number 20 is to approve change order number 1F to site works specialist for Wildwood Drive reconstruction project for a decrease of $123,000, $123,725,000 and 28 cents.
Motion by Drew and a second by Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 21 is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for sports complex lighting at estimated cost of $350,000. I will yield the floor, and I will be abstaining from this one.
A motion to approve by Wright and second by Wyffenbach. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Next item.
Item number 22, Mayor, is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for West Memorial Park parking lot rehabilitation at estimated cost of $200,000. Move approval.
Second by Brad Estes. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 23 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign covenant agreement between Black Hills Power, Inc. and the city of Rapid City regarding the installation of maintenance and decorative streetlights along Energy Park Drive. Make a motion to approve.
Second by Darla Drew. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 24 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign agreement between city of Rapid City and American Engineering and Testing, Inc. for sampling analysis and reporting related to the 2016 environmental monitoring for the Rapid City Municipal landfill in the amount of $90,838.98. Make a motion to approve.
Second by, was that Jerry Wright? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 25 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign agreement between city of Rapid City and Upper Deck Architects for professional services for street maintenance administrative improvements in the amount of $46,500.
A motion by Wyffenbach and a second by Wright. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 26 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign amendment number two to HDR for Fifth Street and Katrin Boulevard traffic signal modifications in the amount of $63,215. Make a motion to approve.
Second by Brad Estes. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 27 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign resolution number 2016-014, a construction fee resolution for Mall Drive Utility Sanitary Sewer Extension Oversized Project Number ST08-1753. Make a motion to approve.
Second by Brad Estes. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 28 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign resolution number 2016-015, a construction fee resolution for the Mall Drive Utility Sanitary Sewer Extension Frontage Project Number ST08-1753. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Brad Estes. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 29 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign amendment to the Sanitary Sewer Service Agreement with Prairie Acres LLC. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, second by Jerry Wright. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 30 is to authorize staff to purchase a 2016 Morbark D86 track stump grinder from Morbark under the National Joint Powers Agreement contract number 042815-MB1 in the amount of $55,822.03. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Darla Drew. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 31 is to authorize staff to purchase a landscape structures, venti play structure for Horace Mann Park from Dakota Fence at a cost of $48,800 using NCPA co-op pricing. Make a motion to approve.
Second by Darla Drew. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 32 is to authorize staff to purchase two 12-passenger, one-ton Chevy Express 3500 vans from Billion Auto from the state contract number 16866 in the amount of $28,171 each, and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Ron Wyffenbach. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 33 is to approve transfer of property jointly owned with Pennington County to sole city ownership and authorize staff to accept and record deeds. I make a motion to approve.
Second by, was that Jerry Wright?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 34 is a request from William Cozer, BTK Land LLC for a variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per city ordinance along Deadwood Avenue and Lean Street for the property located at 2850 Lean Street. I yield the floor.
Motion approved by Wright. Second by Ron Wyffenbach, and we have some speaker requests from the council. Go to Darla Drew first.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I have some questions for Dale Tech on this issue here.
Okay.
So explain to me how this sidewalk decision was reached, because there's no other sidewalks in the area as explained by Mr. Cozer. So why would he be singled out to have to have a sidewalk when the sidewalk leads to nowhere? Or is this just the first foray into having sidewalks? Or can he wait until the rest of the sidewalks are gonna be done?
Dale Tech.
Simple answer to the question is, it's required by ordinance. Ordinance simply states that if you come in for a building permit for a new structure, you're required to put sidewalks in. So that's, that's the requirement. It's nothing new. It's been on the books for a number of years. He's not being singled out necessarily, in my opinion. Building permits, middle that he submitted showed he'd install sidewalks. Staff's recommendation, you were given three, either to approve, approve with a warp or deny. I believe the motion on the table is to approve. City can order the sidewalk in at any time at a later date, as will the other properties in the Deadwood Avenue area, so.
So in the last few years, you have required other people to put sidewalks in, or really there's, there's no sidewalks in that area? Why is that?
That's correct. There have been no building permits for new structures, with the exception of the cold storage that he mentioned, and there was a variance that was approved for that.
And why was that?
That was the council that would have approved the variance.
Okay. So in other words, instead of having this business owner, and we want to be pro-business, pay $20,000 for a sidewalk to nowhere, that we could actually wait until there's going to be more sidewalks built, and then he could do that at that time, when he finds it more within his budget to go ahead and do this. Now, I understand that it was, it was part of what he signed up for. I get that. But he, I don't think he understood the price that would be involved. So I don't know if that's an excuse or a reason, but I think in this case, where there's no other sidewalks, I really don't see any urgency for him to have a sidewalk put in. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I don't view this as, this isn't between us and city engineering. I mean, their, their job is to enforce ordinances. And I can tell you, if you want a building permit, if you're gonna build a new building, and you're, or you're gonna add on to an existing building and increase 20% to its size, and you want to walk out with a building permit, you better show sidewalks. Now, then you, then there's a process to get those waived. And I'm in favor of waiving that on this. You know, I drove Deadwood Avenue, and I knew I didn't even have to drive it to prove it, but from, from Chicago all the way to I-90, there's, there's not a foot of sidewalk. And, you know, we could, we could flex our muscles and say, put those darn sidewalks in, and this will be a good start. But the reality is, is unless a new owner goes and buys a piece of property and they expand 20%, that piece of property's not gonna get sidewalks. I mean, the only way Deadwood Avenue's gonna get sidewalks at this point in time is if we have the intestinal fortitude to go up there and, and order them in for the whole two miles. And, and at that time, then the Browns would fit into that. Now, it'd be totally different, in my mind, if, if Deadwood Avenue was a new development, and maybe two or three businesses had been built, and we'd let, not require them to have sidewalks. And we said, you know, now's the time, let's, let's, let's start a policy, let's get them in, and, and everybody, you know, where they get a permit. But that's not the case here. It's clearly a case of, we're gonna have to suck it up someday and take our medicine and order a whole bunch of people to put sidewalks in. I'm a fan of sidewalks. But, but I think the Browns will fit into that at the time, when the time comes. And I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of granting them the waiver. And, and I just think that, you know, it's, you know, I, sometimes we, I mean, Dale's gotta answer the questions, but, but he's, his job is to enforce ordinances. And I'll just tell you, you don't get a building permit on a new building unless it, on paper, shows a sidewalk. And if you want to get going, draw the sidewalk in and fight about it later. So, thanks.
Okay, now we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
First, I want to say, I visited the building. Mr. Brown, Mr. Cozer, an awesome building. That was just an empty lot, sitting there, an infill. And really, on the date that you were getting the occupancy, I know that you got stressed out. We apologize about that. I think there's, like Alderman Estes had alluded to, there's a process there, but everybody knew when that building was going in, there was gonna be no sidewalk. Absolutely, we knew that. So what led us to that point, that's a process decision that this council has to change at some point and go. Knowing that, going into that, they need to give the flexibility of our staff to not stress you guys out. Putting 800 or a million dollars into a building, and then not being able to move into it because you don't have a sidewalk, is kind of a, a little bit of a bad taste in your mouth. And they said, we should be sitting up here popping a bottle of champagne. I said, your building's awesome, you put some drainage on it, you did everything right on it. It's gorgeous, gorgeous building. I appreciate your commitment to the community, your commitment to the west part of town over there on Deadwood Avenue. You guys did an outstanding job, and whoever built your building did a fantastic job. And I apologize that we stressed you out about the sidewalk. It never was gonna go in there. The council was never gonna require it to go in there. There is a study that's been done on Deadwood Avenue in relevance to sidewalks. And what they, they're looking at alternatives. We've looked at a bike path. I think that, that study that we did is shelved somewhere, is shelved somewhere in this building, to my recollection. So there is something being done about the sidewalks up there. So not, we're not, not doing anything. But again, we're gonna probably go forward with your waiver of right to protest, and someday, maybe it'll be forced in. Maybe we can come up with the alternative that we've been working on with the bike path, extend the bike path up behind the opposite side of Deadwood Avenue, and maybe relieve some of the pressure for the need of that sidewalk. So again, beautiful building. Thanks. Good luck in your business. I know it's a lot of pressure to put that kind of money out there, and to be concerned about a sidewalk at the last minute, the last hour, the last day, you know. So we're beyond that now, though. So, thanks.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a clarifying question, otherwise I'd like to make a substitute motion. But is the motion on the floor to approve with the right? Yes, with the warp. It is. Okay. That's the only thing I wanted, because I am in favor of waiving this. But the majority of the time when we do waiver the request for putting in sidewalks, we do like to have the warp on file, just so that you and anybody else, hopefully, that is aware of that property along that street, is aware that the city can order the sidewalks in at any time. As you've heard up here, it would take a huge burden on our shoulders to actually order that in. And we're, we're really working, or we're hoping staff is working on coming up with a sidewalk plan for a lot of these industrial areas. But I am in favor of waiving the waiver for putting in the sidewalk today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify for citizens that they're watching and those here, approving this doesn't mean that they, they're never gonna have to put in sidewalks. I just wanted to be clear that they're agreeing to put in sidewalks when it becomes feasible for that area, and it works with the city's master plan. I mean, at some point, you know, we're going to have more housing around those areas that surround the industrial areas. And there's gonna be a need. A lot of those businesses are more and more depending on foot traffic. I mean, I've been out there myself. So I just want to clarify that this allows them to not have to do it now, but when allows them to not have to do it now, but when it makes sense and it's feasible for the city to do so, so that it serves the citizens better, then we will do that. We will have those sidewalks put in those areas. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floors, I understand it is to approve with a waiver of right to protest. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, back to legal finance items. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirty-five is to approve the resolution number twenty-sixteen-zero-zero-six to amend the City of Rapid City non-union compensation plan by establishing the new position of the library maker-space manager at the library. I'd like to make a motion to deny, and retain the floor if I can get a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and Amanda, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. The only reason, okay, number one, let me clarify this, because at legal and finance, a lot of the discussion centered on the library's actual maker-space. And I am all for that. It is a great opportunity. It is bringing new technology for the use of all of our citizens and anybody who attends the library. So, the reason I am in favor of denying this request is for the manager position at this time, because the information that came forward is that this is a relatively new idea of this maker-space. It's only been in existence in Rapid City about a year, maybe a little less than a year. And at this time, I would rather see the city use their current FTEs, really develop this, rather than come and ask for a position of a manager created for a program or a space in which they're just now getting off the ground. Because one of their arguments that they brought forth at legal and finance was, is that it's not gonna change the wages at the library, because they're losing a couple people anyways. Well, I have, I keep going around and around thinking about that, and if they have extra FTE money, I'm not so sure the best interest is to create a manager position. So, I would rather see the maker-space program utilize the FTEs, let the library get behind this program, let them build it up a bit, let them really define why they need a manager, what that manager is actually gonna do for responsibilities, how they're gonna grow, or how they're gonna implement those programs in order to get the best advantage for all of our citizens, then come back with that, to us for that manager position. So, I will not be supporting this at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting this particular request, because if we're looking at a technology manager position, those people are expensive. And to be able to fill this with the right kind of knowledge to bring us into the future of library use, we're not talking about a situation where they're gonna make Legos in there. This is a, they're doing, you know, 3D writing, they're doing a lot of different and new technologies. A lot of them, I don't understand, I gotta say that. You know, I'll have to go learn about it. But I just know that these kinds of people just don't appear. And I don't want to do this wrong. I want this to be launched in a good way that's valuable to the community, and if it's not gonna cost us any more money, I don't see any problem with going ahead and saying yes to a management position, especially when you're looking at this level of expertise in this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for you, if you so oblige.
Of course.
My question to you would be, is the library included in on your priority budgeting?
Yes.
Then I cannot see at this point approving this until you get the opportunity to do your due diligence, because I think what you've been doing so far is heading down the right road. I've spent several years on this council, and I have yet to see this type of position being taken. And I'm gonna stand behind it. I told you I'd stand behind it a hundred and ten percent, and I'm gonna stand behind it, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna move forward until that happens. I think that that would be appropriate at this point to allow you to, you know, go through it and get to that point. And when we get to that point, I think that there'll be some fair, honest, balanced, I think we'll get it right. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go back to Darla Drew.
So, just a quick thing. So, Ron Alderman Wyffenbach, are you suggesting we delay this until we go through the priority fund, you know, budgeting process?
Absolutely. Just delay the whole conversation. I think I'll take some time to up myself on this, and then, but I believe that the mayor has committed diligently to the program that he's undergoing, and I really, really believe in it. I've made a commitment to him to commit to this thing a hundred percent, and I think that this would circumvent his process, in my mind. And I believe that I can spend some more time to get my arms around this. I don't quite understand what we're trying to do there. I know the, so that's where I'm at with it. I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't say I would shoot it down, but at this time, I don't think it would be appropriate to circumvent the procedures and policies and processes that he's got going right now. I think it's gonna be very, very useful to the community. And I think as these start to come forward and as he starts to move forward, that the community is gonna get a grasp of this and be very excited. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate that I think this is a bold move for the future, and I'll go ahead and support this.
Okay, we'll go to Steve Laurenti now.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I can, I'd like to ask Mr. McShane a question on this particular issue.
Yes, you may.
Sir, can you give us a brief synopsis of why the library's moving in this direction and the value of this position to the library?
Yes, thank you very much. Jim McShane, library director. The, we've done a lot of research on makerspaces, both reading at library conferences, as well as visiting makerspaces in Colorado, and they are definitely the up-and-coming thing. There seems to be some confusion as to how many positions we are reclassifying. It is only one position that we would like to reclassify as the maker-space manager. And the reason why we want to do this is to be proactive. This is a program that we can bring to Rapid City, and we would like to see it grow, and we know it can grow, but it will require a lot of outreach to the community, both to schools, to the school of minds. And we want to be able to do that. We want to have one person who's going to focus on that, just like we would have one person who would focus on the children's area of the library, or circulation, or anything else. It will benefit the community greatly because of the maker-space movement in general. I think everybody knows about the do-it-yourself movement. This is along the same lines. And all we would like to do is have the opportunity to grow this.
Thank you, sir. And here, the question, and the reason I ask that question is purely because I feel like we are micromanaging, this is my opinion, micromanaging something that has been run very well. I feel like you are representing the board, which has mulled over this particular issue, and have made a decision as a board that this is the direction that's going to best benefit the library. I personally cannot begin to tell you what benefits the library the best. And so, I will support this position and this request, mainly because I trust the board and what they have been able to do up to this point, ever since I've been on the council, to make the library more effective and serve the citizens here in Rapid City. And that'll be the main reasons that I support it. I mean, secondarily, there's the fact that it doesn't change any budget request to the city as well. So, for me, that makes it very, that's very important as well, but mainly because I believe the board is making decisions that they see from an expert's point of view, what's best for the library and serving the citizens of Rapid City, and I trust you on the board to be able to do that. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Brad Estes now.
Thank you, Mr. McShane. Thanks. You know, I received your email, and thank you for sending me. I had no clue what maker-space is, and it appears to me that in order to be relevant, libraries are working towards this high-tech knowledge, I mean, I view it as very technology-driven-based stuff. My question is, is that, is as, as, as you have to move to be, keep your library relevant, what type of services are falling off? I mean, I mean, what I worry about, and I guess, maybe I shouldn't be worried about it till the next budget time, but I guess one of the questions I'm gonna want to be looking at is, is if the relevance is moving this direction, then what are we, what are we peeling off that's no longer relevant? I guess what I'm asking you, if you and your, if you own that library and checks were coming out, and you had to fit this into your budget, I mean, what services are peeling off? What's no longer relevant, and what services are we discontinuing at that library?
Well, nothing, I would say. We do homebound services as well as traditional library services. We have just the same amount of services, whether it's books, paper books and magazines, or DVDs, you know, books on CD. But we also need to incorporate books, eBooks, and downloadable audio books. We do have streaming video and streaming audio. So, in a way, currently, we're in transition, and that's gonna, has been that way for a while, and it's going to be that way for a while longer, until society decides exactly what it wants and what it's gonna feel it benefits from. This maker-space is a new service, something that people are really excited about. We got a really good response at the Business to Business Fair just recently. And it's not age-specific, which I think is the best thing. Kids will be using maker-space as well as probably some of the architects in town. Some of the business people have shown an interest in it, so it will cross all age groups.
So, if an architect, are you charging a fee for the use of it then?
Oh, yeah. Well, if they're using our 3D printer, yes.
Okay. All right. I'll yield. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to deny. We'll back to Steve Laurenti for two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, for keeping track of that as well, because I'm not, I'm trusting you on this.
Okay, one minute.
One, the last, that trust is just diminished. Mr. McShane, the one question I didn't want to, that I didn't ask you as well is, is this already in place? Is the function of this happening, this, not particularly the manager, but the service itself, is, because reality is, the only reason this is before us is because it's creating a position. Otherwise, the board makes the decision, and they do it. But because you're creating a new position, this is coming before the council. So, what, is there, is the library already trying to deliver this service? If you can just briefly give that.
Yes, yes. We do have 3D printers. We do have various other technology that we have available in the library. We are currently working with an architect to create its own space, so that the noise level won't disturb people in the library. We would be putting it in the library's garage, essentially, and then building from there. There are certain components that we can't do in the library now. We would like to add a recording studio and a video studio, so that we can do oral histories, as well as record, if somebody wants to come in and do music, record their own music, we can do that there at the library. There's a lot of different components that we could do if it had its own space. That's why we're working with an architect for that.
Thank you. And I just wanted to ask that, because I assume that that was the case, and I will support this, because this solidifies that effort, which you see as improving the library's service to the city. And I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Now, back to Ron Wyffenbach.
I could go on and on with questions, so I think I'm just gonna maybe ask one question. And I, one of the Alderman asked, if there was fees involved, are the fees associated with the price, the cost that it takes, the space, the time of the machine, the time for the person that is the maker, all that stuff included, and it boils down to this how much time costs?
Well, there's a cost involved in 3D printing. We use a specific.
Well, I'm talking about the overall cost. I mean, this is why I'm mentioning that. I guess I'm not gonna ask any more questions. I'm not gonna support this tonight. There's a lot of questions. I think that the mayor's embarked upon something that's gonna be, I believe, very, I'll leave it at that.
Well, and regardless of whether anybody can support it or not, we definitely would like all of you to come down and take a look at what we've done so far, so.
Yep. Thank you.
The motion on the floor is for denial. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Let's have a roll call. Heidi.
Doyle.
Aye.
Estes.
Aye.
Lewis.
No.
Drew.
No.
Scott.
Aye.
Laurenti.
No.
Wright.
No.
Wyffenbach.
Aye.
It's tied four-four.
Chair votes no. So now, Joel, we just had a motion on the floor to deny an item, and that motion failed. So, is the motion dead? Is the item dead? Does it have to be brought back up, or does that cause it to pass?
No, I think somebody should make a motion to approve it and vote on that motion.
Motion to approve by Laurenti and seconded by Wright. So, let's go to a roll call. Heidi, the motion is to approve item number thirty-five.
Estes.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Scott.
No.
Laurenti.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyffenbach.
No.
Doyle.
No.
Okay, and the chair votes aye. So, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Next item.
Item number thirty-six is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign professional services agreement allowing implementation of a priority-based budgeting for the 2017 city budget. I yield to the mayor.
Well, could we have a motion on the item, or?
No recommendation came from committee mayor, and you said that you would bring forth some additional information, so I thought I'd just go ahead and yield to you and let you explain it.
All right. Well, it's time for a new budgeting process, something that's more than a gimmick or a buzzword. We have identified a system of priority-based budgeting, which was born and raised in Colorado and some of our colleagues down there. And so, we've gotten to see how it works. We've made a relationship with the vendors. For the past year, there's been some work done by department directors to prepare themselves for such a process. And priority-based budgeting, essentially, will reduce every, everything the city does into an identified program, so that the citizens, so that we in the city can see exactly where the money's going, for what cause. And it will help us view the task of budgeting the taxpayer funds, one-hundred-and-fifty-million-plus dollars per year. And it will center us on why. Why do we budget? Why are we spending this money? What are the expected outcomes? What are the related costs, any unintended positive or negative results? And it will allow us to score them within our own departments. It will allow us to identify programs that truly have, were once well justified when they were started, but now have lost their relevance. Government is very good at starting things, not very good at stopping them. I believe this system will give us the tools we need to break the culture of government budgeting that we're so used to and comfortable with. It will allow us to identify programs which have served their purpose and do not need to be sustained any further. I believe there will be substantial budget savings and greater efficiency, and there will certainly be greater transparency. And there will certainly be greater transparency and accountability. So the item on the agenda is to allow us to sign a contract, to hire the contractors from Colorado to come here, to interview all of the people involved in the city budget, to put us through training, to help us understand how to adopt the new system. It will provide web-based software that will allow us to visually display our budget in a different way, so we can understand it differently, understand its relevance, and understand how it fits into our seven core beliefs, which were found in our comprehensive plan. So, to me, that is a very valuable, very valuable thing, something that the taxpayers want and deserve. And for $38,000, we will get a lot of value for that and pay that cost out of the savings several times over. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and make that motion to approve, and the funding source would be undesignated cash for the 2016 budget. Is that your recommendation?
That's correct. For 2016, it would be undesignated cash. For 2017, there will be a support fee, and that will be out of regular budgeted funds. So we have a motion by Amanda Scott for approval. Second by Jerry Wright.
I yield.
Okay, now we'll go to, oops, Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I spoke about this at the legal and finance meeting. And my concerns are, anytime government says they need to spend money to save money, it always scares me a little bit. But I, I understand sometimes we do need to spend money to improve government process, and I understand that. But what I don't understand yet is truly the benefit of having to train city government, who's been budgeting for years, on how to budget. I don't know that, I've sat through quite a few budgets over the last five years. And I would say that some of them were definitely gimmick ridden, especially since when I first came on the council. But I'd say that it has improved dramatically purely just from the presentation of the budget to the council. When I first came on the council, I believe the budget had, don't quote me on this number, but I believe it had like 800 pages in it. You'd think we were running a federal budget at a, at a national level. But, and more recently, those budgets, after my first year, were around 80 pages. So I'd say, just in tenfolded understanding, they improved. The problem I have with this, coming from a finance background as I am, is the people have elected this council and this new mayor to present a budget, not only to the council, but to the people. It's a public item, you know, as far as priority-based budgeting. And I spoke to this at the legal and finance meeting. To understand the principles of it are not rocket science. To apply the principles of, of priority-based budgeting is not rocket science. It would seem to me, without spending $58,000 the first year and $20,000 ongoing, the city could figure out those principles and apply those principles and bring all of the people involved as a team, including the directors, which is obviously an extremely important part of that budget, to work within those constraints of priority-based budgeting. And what I had said at the legal and finance meeting was ultimately, once we've learned those principles and we're applying those principles and demanding that the budget work within those guidelines, we're really paying $20,000 for an online software tool. That's the reality. So I'm, I'm still thinking this through, and I'm hoping tonight I'm gonna hear more. And if, if I can, Mayor, I'd like to ask the finance officer a question on this. Because I think ultimately what I would like to do is see this, the city use it for two or three years with a sunset. Because we'll be able to learn, get all the training, learn and understand it, get the directors, obviously, they're very involved in the budget process already, but on with the training as well, so that they fully embrace the idea of priority-based budgeting and put it into action. And then from there, our finance office has the ability to make sure that that budget process is followed ongoing without us having to pay an ongoing $20,000 for an online software tool. So, Mayor, if I can, I'd like to ask the finance officer her opinion on my opinion.
Wow.
Because that's really what we're dealing with here, opinions at this point, because we really, really don't have anything solid.
Okay, go ahead in a minute and 20 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. And if you could, Pauline, just speak to maybe some of the things I said. And then, of course, you know, this is really, I would say, almost your baby, if you will, ultimately, in the end. So if you could speak to that, I would greatly appreciate it to help me better understand the direction we're moving in.
Okay, I will try to address some of those. First of all, it is the responsibility of the finance office to give the mayor and work with the mayor a budget so that he can present it to you. And I'm gonna step back a little bit on, as far as my opinion of going forward with this contract. I will tell you that Brett Limbaugh did a great job with us a year and a half ago, prepping us to be where we are today. We have done a lot of the work already, and quite frankly, the consultants are impressed with the work that we've done thus far. And it's reflective in the price that they've quoted us to work with us from this point forward. We've kind of gotten to a stalemate, as far as where we're going with our, our sheets, our scorecards. The scorecards, we had them done, and everybody had them down to their programs at a level that was manageable, so we could look at those and actually really score them appropriately. And obviously, each department's gonna score their, their program higher than anybody else, because of course, my, my program is the most important of the city. And so what this tool does, first of all, this, this training, I think, will benefit all of us as department directors, as those, within those departments that actually work with the budgets themselves. And to get them all more comfortable and moving forward in the programming, helping them if they need to break down their programs more, or even in some instances, roll their programs up into a larger program. So I think that training is going to be imperative if we want to actually move forward and use this tool as part of our budgeting. Because what it is to me, the, the software, the $20,000 a year, that is going to be our tool, not only to help the departments figure out how to budget for their programs, but once the mayor gets it, it's going to help him make decisions on, okay, is this something that truly is a priority in our community? Or is it just a priority to the department? Can somebody else do this, this program more efficiently than city government? And, and he can weigh those, those things. And then, again, when it comes to the council, you guys can look at those and take that into consideration. And while, right now, we're not seeing an economic crunch, this is, that is when this priority-based budgeting really comes into play with various communities. And I would rather have something in place now versus later, when we need to have it, when we're desperate for that, because then you look at the programs that are, you're able to cut. Maybe there's something that, because we don't have the funding anymore, we have to cut it. And that's where these score sheets and the tool, being the software, help us. Now, do I think it should sunset? I don't know. I haven't, I, I don't know that you want to give up a tool like that. It would be, I don't know, there's other tools out there that you're not gonna want to give up because it assists you year after year after year. I'm, I haven't looked at the contract recently, but I think at the end, there are, somewhere in there, there's terms. We can either renew or not in certain intervals. And if the council decides at the time that where we're at in the process, we don't need to renew with the software, that's fine, that, that's gonna be a decision where, where you guys are gonna be involved in. But I do think this is a good step forward in getting to where we need to be to fully implement the priority-driven budgeting process.
Thank you.
Thank you, now we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll support this, but I, I want to add that this is only a tool in the budgeting process. And I think that realistically, the community needs to look at several things. And number one, the budget is a product of the expectations of the citizens of the community and what they want and need, the things we have to do. And the taxes or fees are what are necessary to get that done. I think we also need to include within this process of budgeting is one of those needs that we have to do that we're not doing, such as street maintenance and repair and some of our utility replacement and repair. Those things all need to be accounted for and added into the equation so we know really what it costs to run this city, so we can honestly figure out what we need to raise in revenue. And that needs to be a part of this process. And if this will help do that, fine, thank you. And I, I agree with Steve. Sunset is probably a good idea, because if it doesn't improve the process, then we get rid of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, now we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a person that has actually been out at that podium during these processes. So I have a very different perspective on what it's like to go through budgeting. And then also, from the perspective of a council person, and the newest member, actually. And I think that a priority-based system has the potential to take some of the mystery out of our budgeting and how things get done. Sometimes they seem rather arbitrary in how we make our decisions and how we go through our discussions. And if the group that we're talking about is, didn't make the meeting or wasn't invited for some reason, it can come out with a very different result than we may have intended when we started our budget discussions. I think a score and, and the kinds of things we're looking at with this will give us some real measurements for the first time. It's not, we're just not gonna sit around and talk about, oh, these guys need this, and my group needs this. It would actually give us some basis for why we're making the decisions we're making. Thank you.
Now we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes I think I just flew in from the planet Mars. Up till five minutes ago, I wholeheartedly agreed with this philosophy and, and moving forward. But I can tell you, from being on the council at different periods of time and dealing with different councils, when you say something, why don't you mean it? And we're gonna have, if we want to have priority-based budgeting, and we want to do what the constituents want to do, and we want to do what we're charged with, five minutes ago, we sat here and I asked the head of the library if he could identify what the costs were associated with a new program that we just approved. Now we want to come back and go, oh, we need to prioritize budget this stuff. I don't, I think I just flew in on a spaceship. I'm not exactly sure what you guys want to do. I, I think that if you want to do this, then we gotta commit to doing it. Don't, we can't sit up here and go back and forth and wishy-washy because one of our favorite little programs comes forward and we're gonna vote for it, and it's gonna cost 30,000, 50,000, 60,000. And we don't even know what service it's gonna provide to the community. We don't even know if that service is provided by some other private sector person in the community. But yet, we just voted it in. And now we're saying, oh, we gotta have this because we gotta prioritize these budgeting things. I, I'm gonna maybe overlook this one and, and go for this thing? Because I think it, I believe, I mean, I, five minutes ago, I was 100% wholeheartedly. Now I'm taking the bullet out of my foot. I believed in this thing. And now I'm just really questioning whether we have the ability and the fortitude, or whatever was alluded to by the other aldermen here, even do it. And why do, why pay for something if we're not gonna do it? I would prefer to someone to make the motion to continue it, have another, another wholehearted conversation about if we're really committed to doing this. This is tough decisions. We can't sit here and have somebody come up there and pull our heartstrings and say, oh, we're just gonna do this, and then come around, turn around at budget time, like Alderman Drew had specified to, and she's made this comment to me before, about these people who are hanging on the string at the last minute. That's not fair to them. And sure not fair for a department head to come up here and ask us midstream to make a change. We voted in. Now you're telling me we need to spend money to, to do this other prioritized budgeting process? But yet, we, five minutes ago, we had an opportunity to show people in the city, in our citizens, that we are committed to spending their money like it was our own, like we earned it, and we want to get the best bang for our buck out of it. And we understand what every program costs, down to the T. And there's gonna be tough decisions. And if this council doesn't have the ability to make those tough decisions, I don't have the ability to support this. I really don't. If we do, and you guys want to vote through, I'll support it, just like I said before. I'll support it 100%, but I'm not gonna sit up here and feel like I flew in from Mars five minutes ago, like I didn't hear the conversation that just happened. If someone can answer me those questions, Mayor, if you want to weigh in on it, I'd appreciate it because I feel that you're a part of this. You broke the tie on this, and yet, I thought we were moving forward with, with moving forward and, and getting these costs identified to where they, where they are specifically meant to be, what they really cost and the services they really provide. That's what my constituents want.
Right, I'll, I'll try to address that. This particular issue that came up with the library was an issue that changing this job description doesn't start anything new at the library. It formalizes it. They're doing this now. If we were to vote no tonight, they would continue to do it and wait till a different time to seek a change in the job description. The priority-based budgeting philosophy has to do with breaking down each department into various projects. The difficulty we have with the library is that they're controlled by a board, yet they're funded by the general fund. So, Mr. Laurenti was right, to an extent, when he said he felt like we were micromanaging. I think that's true, because the board is there to do that. The city, however, since it provides the funds, has to be concerned with the bottom line. Therefore, we have to be aware of the programs and aware of the priorities. And I don't feel like we really are at this point. I don't think that we have been in a number of years. So part of the budgeting process will be to become more familiar with these things. And we are gonna vote on the library. We're gonna budget based on that bottom line. The other departments will face much different type of scrutiny when it comes to each individual program. And so I don't want you to see this as a contradiction, I know you do, but some of the groundwork has been laid for priority-based budgeting, but the bulk of the work lies ahead. And because of this vote to create a job description tonight does not ensure that position for the next six months even, or any other. So we will get a handle on this, but we have to start. And I, whatever you do, I recommend you don't kick this down the road because we're late, we're getting late in the season, and we have a lot of work to do, and we need to do, get it done quickly.
I hope you don't take that out of my time, and I appreciate the answer, but it's somewhat, somewhat of a no answer to me. I, but I have committed to it, and we've had our discussions. I think it, it will, will have results. I believe it'll have results as long as this council understands, takes the time to understand what this is gonna entail. And this is gonna entail making some tough business decisions that I have concern that we have the ability to do. And I guess, I guess the proof is in the pudding, as always, I'll support it. I, I think that it's, the periods of time that I've been here and, and served under certain administrations, I believe that it can be done. I have hope that it can be done. I got an election coming up, and my, you know, quite frankly, my campaign depends upon whether we have the commitment to do it. And I'm not gonna sit up here for another three years and go through the same things I've been through over and over and over again. I'm here to make a difference, I'm here to make a change. I love my city, as evidenced by some of the people who came here tonight asking for things that they wanted from their city, that the city had made it hard for them to get. I want to change those things. I don't want to talk about it anymore. I don't want to kick the can down the road anymore. I want to be specific, narrow it down, and change those things. And, and I think this budget process with my, my management skills that I've had in the past and my ability to do numbers, is, in this plan, I believe, if we take it wholeheartedly and, and understand that there's gonna be tough decisions, there's gonna be some people that are gonna have bad feelings when they, when they get approached by this plan, we just have to understand that. That's, they're gonna, I mean, I think that the mayor's, he's taken some personal time himself to get used to it and, and put it into action. I, I'll support it, and I'm, I'm ready to start making this thing take place. I'm, patience is running thin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to Jerry Wright for four more minutes or less.
I'd like to make a motion, a friendly motion to amend this agreement to a three-year sunset.
Second. Okay, we have a substitute motion to approve for three years.
Yes.
Okay, and we had a second from Laurenti. Go to Darla Drew.
I guess I'm not speaking to the motion on the floor. I just wanted to make it clear that my decision on the library was based on the fact that I sit on the library board, and I have personal knowledge of what, what they do and what they're, where they're headed, and that, that's my only comment.
Joel, weigh in, please.
Yeah, so we don't wander around in the weeds too long. I mean, it's an annual contract. If you don't appropriate the money for it next year, it's done next year. So it'll have to be approved in the budget, and it'll be one of the items that I guess you'll evaluate in the future years if you want to approve it in the budget. But we, we are not. not obligating ourselves really beyond this year, so.
Okay. Thank you. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I do support the amendment to the motion purely because our finance office has the ability and I believe a tool with our new software package, which allows them to launch priority-based budgeting. And the reason I support the sunset is because, and support the three years, is that it allows the city to get the training, allows the city to soak up all of that training for the directors, for everybody involved in the budgeting process, and hopefully it will deliver what's being promised. And if it's not, then I understand that this is a contract that has the ability to renew every year, but the fact of the matter is if we put a sunset on it, then it's something we definitely have to vote on, definitely have to vote on, to renew within three years. Otherwise, it has to be brought up by somebody to bring that to a vote. If we do this tonight, we say, let's do this for three years, let's give the city and staff a chance to buy into this, to get the training necessary so that the buy-in is done with some conviction about the principles of the entire priority-based budgeting, and then we can take over and stop wasting the taxpayers' money at that point because we'll have the ability then to do that with a module that goes with our current new software system that we just spent a lot of money purchasing. And so I'm hoping that my colleagues will support this purely because it allows us and forces the future councils, and some of us may not be here, to look at what this priority-based budgeting has done for the city three years ago. That's why we should have a sunset, not because you either agree or disagree about having this program, but that it has a future council deal with this and look at the performance over the last three years. That's why we should support it. Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't support the current amendment on the floor because if we happen to get into this for thirty-eight thousand dollars and it turns out it's not the tool for us, I would rather make the decision at that time not to continue it rather than to be locked into a three-year decision. I believe that we can just approve this tonight for this year and then let the budget speak for itself when the mayor brings it back forward. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
The intent of the three years is max. I understand that we terminate a year. Can we do it? Yeah? Thank you. Three years is max.
Okay, back to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And here, I cannot support it because of a max, because what if the tool is good? Then all of a sudden, we have to leave it up to a next council to decide then if they want to put an extension on it. Again, this is a decision that the mayor can bring forward in his budget and the council can decide whether they support it or not. I believe the original motion to just approve it for the implementation as the tool for the 2017 priority-based budget is the motion that I will be supporting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to respond to that because the reality is that what Mr. Wright was saying is that, and what I have said previously, is that it makes sure that it comes back three years and we, the next council addresses it. Her response was that it locks us into it. Well, we've taken care of that. And if it's a success in three years, which is what she's speaking to, if it's successful in three years, that council, whoever's sitting here in three years, will be a very easy approval if it's been very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. So the, Charity Doyle.
I'm just looking at this agenda item, and it's only for the 2017 city budget. Mayor, I would trust that after you go through the process of the 2017 budget, you would bring us a recommendation on if you thought this tool was valuable or not. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve with a three-year sunset. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let's have a roll call.
Louis.
No.
Drew.
No.
Scott.
No.
Laurenti.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyffenbach.
Aye.
Doyle.
Estes.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, is there a new motion?
To approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Doyle and second by Estes. Now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't sure if I wanted to talk or go out and slam my hand in the car door. If I do the hand deal, does that come out of my five minutes? No, you know, this is no joking. You know, I thought priority-based budgeting was a campaign slogan. I didn't know it really existed, but one thing I do know for sure is that, you know, we all run for office for different reasons and we all, different things are important to us all, but one of the most important things we have to get together each year and do is the budget. And some people have, looking at a budget, working is more natural to some than others, and I'm not sure which classification I fit in, but I think that there's always room to learn, and I think this is going to be really interesting, and I'm going to vote in favor of this. I, what I just find interesting is that how we can, we're going to be able to fill out forms and have some, you know, at the end of the day, I think we're all going to have, we're going to come to the table with our own priorities and our own projects and our own beliefs, so I really, I really look forward to learning on this, and it's a tool the mayor's asking for, you know, and he's our CEO, and it's a tool he wants to put to work and, you know, and he'll have to, he'll have to stand up for it. I mean, I'm going to vote for it, so I'll have to, if it's a failure, I'll have to answer to the people also, but I'm prepared to vote in favor of giving him the tools that he's asked so that he can put together the budget in the manner that he's asking for. And I'll be out in the parking lot. Thanks.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you. My spaceship leaves here shortly, Mr. Estes. There's room for you. I don't think anybody doesn't support it. I think it's just a matter of philosophy of what kind of commitment we have, but the biggest commitment that we're going to make is this is going to get approved. The biggest commitment we're going to make, like I said before, is from each one of you, and each one of you that survive your elections coming up, it's going to be some of the biggest commitments that you've probably made. The campaign slogans, I've heard them all. Fix potholes, create jobs, economic development. I'm a pro builder, whatever, any of them, I've heard them all, but I've never seen the actions behind them. And we got the ability to do that if we're willing to do it, and it's going to be some tough decisions, and I'm behind it a hundred percent. Now, again, I mean, after I can remove the bullet from my foot and got the explanation, I think I can stand back and, but we have to understand that this council and this administration, specifically the administration, because I know from sitting on this council that it, without some cohesiveness between the administration and a mutual agreement upon what is priority, nothing will ever happen to the good. Everything will always be convoluted, and the taxpayers always end up paying the price in the end through dysfunction. If we can, if we can get these priorities and identify what's happening within our city, because I'm telling you right now, my, there's times when I wonder who the is in charge. I kid you not, after being in the private industry forever and dealing with the fact that I have control of most decisions that are being made and some of the business owners that I talked to, and today, two of them were here today, and we talk and we have conversations about their businesses, how they run their businesses and what their priorities are, and they understand them clearly, clear as day. Revenue, expense, make sure my employees are productive. Revenues, expense, make sure my employees are productive. Those are big things in this, as we move forward. We're going to commit to this. If this council votes on it tonight and we commit to it, then I'll be the biggest advocate up here for it, and I'll be reminding people that there are priorities and there are going to be tough decisions, and you may not like them, they may not be your pet project, so just understand that, so. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and honestly, it really comes down to what Alderman Wyffenbach just said because honestly, we don't have a lot here to go on. The fact of the matter is it takes some trust. That's what we're dealing, that's what we're going to be voting on tonight, do we trust this administration to deliver it. Fact of the matter is, we've heard this before with previous efforts to save the taxpayers' money, and Compass being one of them, which I fought for in the very beginning, to make something provable in that entire process, that they were saving the taxpayers' money, that there was something measurable going to come out of that new process that would say, we saved X. When you promise to save the taxpayers millions and you can't prove a dime, that's a complete and utter failure. And so here we are again to a trust situation, and I would, I would hope, this is, that's a really hard pill for me to swallow. I mean, I understand priority-based budgeting is extremely important to city government, government as a whole, but I've seen after five budgets and different processes that many times there are priorities, like very high priority things, either for public safety that we're not in budgets, that got walked onto a budget through the hearings, and we're talking some pretty critical stuff. So I'm really struggling with the ability for this administration to do what they really want to do. If they can, that would be great, but the reality is, is that my experience in the last five years doesn't want me to say yes, but sometimes you do have to trust the administration, and I think I might give him that, but I'll guarantee you every year, because I'll be here next year, I'm going to win my election, I will be here and will be questioning this budget that's going to be coming forward, and I'll do it in detail. As everybody knows, I am not afraid to ask the tough questions, I am not afraid to challenge the status quo, and I am not afraid to be on a vote of nine to one. I've been there many, many times, and so I will vote yes tonight, but I just want the mayor to understand that I will be here the next budget and I'll be asking those questions. Thank you.
Okay, in a second, we're going to take a vote. I'm going to just take a moment of privilege since several of the rest of us have, and I brought this item forward. To Mr. Wyffenbach, I am in charge. I was elected by about eighty-five hundred citizens who felt that I had what it takes to be in charge, and I accept that challenge, and I'm not going to put that off on anybody else, including a council, including department directors. No one will be my fall guy. I was police chief for seven years. About five of those years, I turned back a million dollars a year because we didn't need to spend it. It's full eight percent of the budget. It is not that hard, but that's one department budget, and you add in eleven department budgets and the public works, which is, to me, more complicated than the rest of the ten budgets put together. It's very confusing, and I see that we have a budgeting culture here, and it's not pointing fingers and swearing at anybody, that's just saying we've been using the same tools and the same mentality here for a long time. It's easy to spend other people's money. I never took that approach as police chief. I turned back that money when I could have spent it at the end of the year, every single year. I never did a year of in-spending, and I never will. And to Mr. Laurenti, you can, you can trust me, and I, I trust that if you could have come to any of the meetings in the last six months that I had invited you to, that I would have been showing you the sense behind this budgeting mechanism and showing you some of the success stories and showing you the, some of the work that the city departments have already done to identify programs. All of the other council people have met with me and heard some of these things, and that is just one of the difficulties when you don't have all the information. So I'm telling you, you can trust me, and telling you that I'll stand before you in July, and this will be my budget. I will not have anyone to blame it on. If it's good or if it fails, I'll guarantee you one thing. The only time you'll hear me bragging about it is if it fails, when I'm taking all the blame for it. If it passes, if it's good, if it saves millions of dollars or whatever the positive outcome will be, that's, that will be because I've done my job and the department directors have done their job. So we are going to take a vote now. Mr. Laurenti, you've spoken twice on this issue. So there is a motion to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item, please. Let's see, community planning. Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirty-seven is a request by Dream Design International, Inc. for a preliminary subdivision plan for the Gateway Business Park subdivision, generally described as being located south of the intersection of East Mall Drive and Outfitter Road. I recommend approval with stipulations.
Second by Amanda Scott. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Item number thirty-eight is a request by Spurlet Consulting, Inc. for Velagio LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for the Villas at Velagio, generally described as being located north of the intersection of Katron Boulevard and Vineyard Lane. I recommend approval with stipulations.
Motion and a second by Amanda Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number thirty-nine is a request by Dec LLC for Spurlet Consulting, Inc. for preliminary subdivision plan for property being generally described as being located lying north of Haynes Avenue and Cobalt Drive intersection, Haynes Avenue and Cobalt Drive, excuse me, for the Auburn Hills subdivision. I recommend approval with stipulations.
Second by Brad Estes. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we are on to item, public hearing items, items forty-one through forty-six. There are no speaker request forms, so we will not have a public hearing time or public comment time, so then we'll go on to consent public hearing items forty-one through forty-six. Motion to approve and second by Ron Wyffenbach.
Steve Baldwin.
Okay, so go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to poll item forty-four. I do not have a financial interest, but I am their landlord, so I would like to abstain from item forty-four. Thanks.
Okay, so let's ask for a new motion to approve the consent public hearing items forty-one through forty-six with the exception of forty-four. Okay, move by Scott, second by Louis. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item number forty-four is a LC Beer LLC DBA Lost Cabin Beer Company, fourteen oh one West Omaha, Suite Three for retail, on, off, sale malt beverage license. Move approval by Doyle, second by Drew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, the bill list, item number forty-seven. We'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is one addition to the bill list to Metropolitan Life Insurance in the amount of five thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-one cents, bringing our new total to six million eight hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and four cents.
Okay, got a motion to approve by Laurenti, second by Estes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, the next item is item forty, and I say we take a ten-minute recess and come back and handle item forty. We're in recess. Huh?
You say truly, you want us at the podium like, is that what you want to do?
We're probably going to make the motion to.
Wait till we see, wait till we see if they're going to take it on. Going to take it on, I think you can go.
Really have to delay it.
Next item on the agenda is item number forty, which is to review the investigative report on a on alleged violation of Rapid City Code of Conduct for elected officials. It's my understanding that there's some... Since there's two members of the council gone, there may be some feeling by some of the members to postpone and pick a different day. Also, some members seem to want to get this handled today. I just thought that before we decide that, I would run through the different options that we have here tonight and I'll glance over at the city attorney once in a while because I think I'm right about this. I just would... Might want some verification. I think this can be... This item can be handled, if the council would choose to do so, by acknowledging the investigative report, taking their time on the podium or at the dais to share their thoughts about it, issue some form of critique toward Alderman Wright, and this item could be done. That's the... On the easiest side of things. On the most difficult, most complicated part, the council could take a vote, an official vote, to conclude that a violation of the code of conduct has been committed. That vote would require, based on the way the resolution is written, would require seven of the 10 members of the council, eight of which are here, one of which is Jerry Wright, who has told us that he's not voting tonight on that. Once then, if there was a majority, two-thirds majority vote on the determination that there was a violation, then it would also take a two-thirds majority vote to issue a sanction, which could come under any option available to the council under the law, including a resolution of censure. So those are the options and whether or not the council chooses to hear this tonight or another night is up to them, so I will open the floor for a motion. Steve Laurenti. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item until the council meeting of March 7th. Now we'll go to Brad Estes. There. Technology's awesome. Timer works. All right, well, anyway. Support the motion to continue. Okay, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've sat through one of these before. The percentage of the voting block has changed. At that point in time, it was a 6-3 vote that censured a once councilman from this dais. I can support the wishes of the council. I got to say, there's not a day that goes by that somebody doesn't ask me about this. I think the citizens of Rapid City, Mr. Sasso, Mr. Wright, are, you know, they want to get this over in their minds and so they can move on with their lives. I just want to re... Have someone repeat the fact that if a vote of a violation takes seven votes also, is that correct, Mr. Lending? Or is it a majority of the council?
Well, now my microphone isn't working either. Yeah, it is.
It's interesting to me that the rules changed, but I can...
Well, I... They changed after the censure of former Alderman and former mayor Quaker. A policy was adopted after he was elected mayor, which made it more difficult to, in the future, censure or take action against an Alderman.
I got it and there was some specific reasons why I asked that question upfront weeks ago, but I won't get into that tonight. I'm not... I'm not sure which direction I'd... I'm not sure which direction it's going to take tonight if we want to listen to Mr. Sasso and Mr. Wright to see what they have to say before I make a decision would... I mean, whether they want to continue it or not continue it. I... I think it... I think, or I guess, whatever. I'm not sure, I'm at a loss.
Steve Laurenti.
But I... The reason I made the motion to continue it for two weeks was purely based on the fact that I believe that this is a very important issue facing our city government, that we need to make sure that we are as open as possible and forthright in this particular issue. So for me, it's a matter of the fact that we have eight people here and for us to continue tonight, to complete this, and I assume that Mr. Wright would probably recuse himself from the vote if he doesn't. But if he does, that means unanimously the remaining seven would need to vote to do whatever we need to do. And I believe it's important that every council member be heard, that they be heard not only from their vote, but be heard from their opinion about the investigation. And that is why I made the motion to continue this item for two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, and let's hear from Jerry Wright's counsel on the matter, if he has anything to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Just something brief as to this issue. Your rules call for notice to be given of... To Mr. Wright, who stands basically accused. And the notice was given, this was a time set. We're here, I've sat through the proceedings earlier, waiting for this to come. It's appropriate to hear it tonight. There's no guarantee that you'll have any more or you could have less that first meeting of the month in March. And at this point, since we stand ready, we'd ask, do we just go for it?
Okay. Thank you. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it would be pertinent that Mr. Sasso had the same courtesy. I think Mr... Mister... The attorney speaks for Mr. Wright, so I think that Mr. Sasso, I believe, would have the same.
Okay, I'll let Mr. Sasso speak on the issue of the continuance only.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say, I would agree with the motion that is on the floor, given that as a council, you are looking at whether or not to discipline one of your own or to do nothing or all your options, but to me, it makes sense. Typically, you don't have as few members as you do tonight. Yes, it's possible you may end up with someone missing, but at the same time, I would think that it would make the most sense to have the most council members available. And right now, you're particularly short tonight. So I think just... Just from the standpoint of fairness and there again, whether or not it actually has to be on a regular council meeting or if you wanted to expedite it to a different day, you know, I... I'm kind of indifferent on that. I just... I do believe that the full council, as much of the council as possible, would make the most sense. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to continue the item to the March 7th city council meeting. All in favor of that motion? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, but just I'm... Was sitting here listening and March 7th kept running in my mind and I finally realized what it is. I will be out of town, so I just want to be perfectly frank because I just remembered that. So I will not be here March 7th, so you will already be down one city council member. Sorry. I knew that date was in my mind. I will not be here on March 7th, so... Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, motion is to continue it. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oops. Roll call, please. Continue.
No.
Aye.
No.
I said yes.
Estes. Louis.
Aye.
Tie three to three. Jerry didn't vote.
There's seven.
Let's do another roll call. There's seven of us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
So one more time.
Scott.
No.
Laurenti.
Aye.
Wright. Sorry. Wyffenbach. Doyle. Estes. Louis. Drew. Motion passes to continue.
Four to three. Item is continued till March 7th. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
The next one is the next regular... The next one is the next Monday, regular Monday night. So if he's not there, I agree with you. Then we have an issue.